All right, it's a little after seven o'clock. We're starting caucus. First item on the agenda, Mr. Donovan, Celebrate Poland Electric Field.
Yeah, like I communicated with you guys earlier, Celebrate Poland sent us a check for the amount that I originally asked, that we originally asked them for, for the repairs needed for the code violations. And I was gonna ask council, I'm asking council to consider that as paid in full. And we talked about it during the bloopers meeting. I know there's gonna be more costs associated with that after the inspection is done. But Celebrate Poland paid what they were asked to pay, in good faith. And I personally believe that we should call it a day. Because it's not really their problems, in my view. The person that they had do the work was the person that fell down on job and caused all these problems, not Celebrate Poland. And I just hate to continue to experiment with them, and I'd like to move on. Now, Linda spoke during the bloopers meeting that she'd like our solicitor just to double-check everything and go with this and make sure that we're not doing anything that could bite us down the road. And I'll yield to that. That's probably a good idea, that it would be safe and sorry. Just give his opinion, make sure that you're not doing anything improper, because it is gonna be, it is gonna be taxpayer funds, it's gonna take care of the rest of the, the rest of the costs.
Do you have a guess about the value?
Not accurately, I have a feeling that it's gonna be around five or six hundred dollars. To pay who? To pay the electric to take care of the additional things that Celebrate Poland's contractor screwed up.
We need to fix it, Joe, once and for all. Those things have to be taken care of.
Celebrate Poland did pay the bill that was sent to them, the gas didn't pay. And they were totally unaware of any additional costs at suing. And he did his part.
So you want six hundred bucks to take that bill?
Well, we're gonna hold off. We're gonna let solicitor look at this first and make sure that we're not doing anything that's not right. Once we get his opinion, hopefully his opinion agrees with mine, then we can move on and bring it out to the next council.
Mrs. Serna, Amendment to Appropriations Ordinance.
Yes. I just lost mine. I think it was, was there only one item on there? Or it was one? Who mishandled it? There's a computer amendment. Thank you. This is for the computer fund, and it is for the software, the annual software program. So it's a mandatory thing that we need. Two thousand dollars is going to be appropriated, we're gonna increase the appropriation for that particular fund, and the money is available in that fund to do so. So we're not going over, and we're not putting that fund into the red. That's the only thing that's on here.
Yeah, that's all there is.
Why do you need this?
Well, we spent an additional two thousand dollars on new cameras, and ones we have here died. So we did that this year. Sort of, yeah. Russ is gonna watch it. So, that just helps.
Anyone else have any items for caucus?
I can go over number six on my report. I went to the county recorder's office regarding Elver. They told me that's not where I should go. They sent me down to the tax maps section. So I went down there, and they got out all these big things, and they showed that it's just a little narrow thing going through there. That area was replanted in 1953. And it shows her that it is a thing on street, dedicated street. In fifty-three. But, he said, "You have to check to see if council accepted it." There's a section of revised code that I've attached, 72303, which says, even though it's given to the village, the village has to adopt enough ordinance in order to accept it. Furthermore, he said, "The street could have been vacated." He said, "If it was vacated, since it's not resurfaced, then it isn't yours." So, he suggested going back through ordinances and council minutes back to nineteen fifty-three.
Do we have them?
I'm sure.
There's minutes, there's minutes, there's ordinances upstairs.
So then I also contacted the state auditor's office, and they said that if it's not a village street, do not spend public funds on that, because it'll be a finding for recovery.
Well, this we knew.
Yeah.
Vacated, how would the village have vacated? By ordinance? Do you know, Dave, are you familiar?
No, I've never heard of it, to be honest with you.
That has to be some sort of legislative mechanism.
By ordinance as well, so there should be.
By council.
If it was accepted in the first place, there'd be one ordinance, if it was vacated, there would be a second ordinance.
There would be a second ordinance.
I would say go to ordinances, why waste your time on minutes?
So finally, he said, "If you find any information, send it down here to us," because obviously, they don't have anything, so.
So they're not really showing whether it actually is, then?
They're showing it as a thing on dedicated street.
Except that they don't know that that's really true.
But they don't know if that's actually in effect.
So then if we would actually use money to do anything there, and after the fact we find out, or someone else finds out, that it is not technically dedicated road, we'll be cited and we'll have a finding for recovery for spending that money?
Whose property is that? Whose property is that? Okay, so there's a dirt road there right now, whose property is that? Is that village's?
Well, we don't.
We don't know?
We don't know, that's the whole issue.
Because if it was vacated, then it should have been replatted to the people alongside.
It would just go down the middle.
Right, it would go down the middle, and it would go to.
But we don't know if there's an easement there, or not?
No, we don't know if there's an easement, that's a whole different animal, because the.
Because if there was a dedicated road, there would have to be an easement.
Right.
Maybe when we head on, they don't do some checking on the trees, he probably will get it and find that out for you, since he's a technician.
I mean, and along, if there's a road, there has to be an easement? I think that's true, Steve, how about a survey?
No, you don't need an easement if there's.
Like, utility company needs to get on that property.
Yeah, like in the back of those houses on Elver, there's the Ohio Edison easement. So.
Are there, there's no lines across this section, there's nothing there, right?
No, it's in the back of those houses.
There's no sewers, there's no curb.
No, there's no curb.
I mean, if you look at Joe's report from MS, there's a nice picture of the street, and what is, I'm thinking is vacated, or it's not.
Did everybody get a copy of that?
Yeah, that's the same thing they have down at the county. Right, that's the same thing they have at the county.
It looks like this was supposed to be a cul-de-sac, and it's chosen on the map.
Do you have this cul-de-sac?
It looks like it, on there is a circle, usually when there's a circle, I think it's called a cul-de-sac. And if you go back, you can see where it kind of looks like it was supposed to be, but it doesn't look like it was ever done.
Did they elaborate on their interpretation of public funds? No. Well, in what capacity? Plowing from coal, because if that's the case, we have an issue.
We plowed that road?
Yeah. Then we plowed the one out there, which is plowed. But that's done for safety, as is that, because farmers have to go through there, because there's no way for them to turn around.
We plow, you know, bottom also has a safety matter, so in case.
Emergency vehicles.
Emergency vehicles have to go back.
I don't know, I don't know if the plot map shows that it's plowed as a street.
Yes, that was this bill, that I got from the county.
But we still need to have the ordinance.
Yeah, we need to find that ordinance, that we've accepted it, or that it was vacated.
So where do we find that?
The ordinance.
The ordinance books.
So basically, this is on us, to find these documents and be sure.
They have no further information down there.
That it has authorized it.
And what year did that happen?
Nineteen fifty-eight. Forward, yeah.
From there forward, ten years.
Because we really don't know when it would take.
All you have to do is read the headers. It shouldn't be a quick find, if you're just reading the headers.
Right, yeah, because there's an index.
But it hasn't happened since most of you guys have been here, so it's.
So then even once we find the first one, we have to keep going and make sure it wasn't vacated at some point?
Yes, yeah, because if it was vacated, then it eliminates the fact that we've accepted it.
How would they ever put something down that it's vacated?
An ordinance, the vacated.
Why would they have a vac?
I have no idea. Well, I don't know what went on there.
Well, I'm just looking through the, the ordinance book, excuse me, under the streets utilities and public services, and there isn't anything about vacating roads. Doesn't even, doesn't talk about dedicated roads, doesn't talk about vacated roads.
But we did do it recently for the school, when we vacated Elver. And that was just a few years ago, when we had to vacate the street.
And it was done by ordinance?
Yes.
I don't think.
I mean, you would have to have a proper document of someone.
That was the most recent one I've done.
That would probably be like county law, state law, wouldn't we? Why does we do that?
They don't connect.
To connect.
That's only chapter seven twenty-three of the revised.
That's right, I remember when we did that. It shouldn't be hard to find, it really should.
Okay, the guy in the corner, he uses that for, to get into his garage.
Yeah.
I mean, something's screwed here. First of all, why are we messing around like this? I'm gonna get Mike here to give us a couple loads of gravel, and we'll put it down there, it's not our money, and forget about it.
Are they gonna do the work?
Well, I've been talking to him.
We even have gravel down there every other year, ever since I can remember.
Oh, no, we haven't.
Oh, yeah, we have. Oh, yeah, we have. Rust goes and fills in the pot holes there, almost, almost every year. Same thing, same with the thing with, uh, Sharon, down towards walking path. He grades it too, that's why it just humps on the side, so yeah, we've done work on it. I think he grades the gravel decently. Yeah, we've asked him to do that all the time. Anyone else have any comments, Edens?
Well, I can bring that up. I checked with our insurance agent, and they've informed me that we have a Poland Historic Preservation Act, and somebody sues us because of it, claims that there's been a loss of their property value. Our insurance does not cover it, there's an exclusionary provision in there. Nick just gave me the insurance, I haven't been able to find it yet, I think I'm pretty close to it, but he said that if a legislative body changes it and affects the property value, and the value goes down, people, obviously, if they sue against this thing, the ordinance or the implementation of it, our insurance will not cover it, they will not defend us, and we're on our own. And he said, "No other insurance company that he can find insurance against that." I don't know, that's sort of your expertise, but he said that there is an exclusion in the policy for, for the counties that sued on that. So that's kind of quite a thing, because most of it, all the cases that I look at, people claim that their property values, if you put restrictions on somebody's house, property value goes down immediately, and people get mad about that and sue. And that's, if they sue on that basis, it's not covered.
That'd be interesting to find out how, let's see, if we can do it in this area, Hanfield, Salem, Lisbon, in Milltown, I have a list. Youngstown.
I know, and see, I think.
Oh, and there's more, I'm just talking about in the tri-county area. I have a list of like nine, ten municipalities.
And I wondered how they do it, when they get a bond, then do they get that special bond or a guarantee that they pay that if they sue, this surety would, would cover the council, otherwise, we're vulnerable, they get sued. And we're, of course, are pretty small, and all you need is a couple of cases to put you over, you know, our budgetary rules are pretty strict here, we don't have money to stay the lawyers for the damages.
The state, the state encourages this, this type of legislation. I mean, they strongly, so maybe we can get some information from.
Well, I was gonna ask Tomlin to take a look at it, to confirm that this reading of it, that there is an exclusionary clause over, we're there on this one, if we go through with it.
Well, we'll look at that. Take note. Anything else? I'll go through my, my report. Just remember that Halloween is November first, which is a Saturday, four to six. Our next council meeting will be on Wednesday, November fifth, because of the election on November fourth. And then September, Violations Bureau account has been balanced. Did Paula talk to any of you guys about the bank situation? Has she talked to anybody?
Yes.
We're with Key Bank right now, we're with Home Savings Forever for the Violations Bureau, and they stopped doing government accounts, and now they're back doing them again. So her question was, because Key Bank charges twenty-five dollar service charge every month, and she had talked to them, they would waive that, or whatever, and I guess they said they would actually do the checks for her there, like, you know, pre-printing, but she, I think it's better for her to go to Home Savings, it's closer, but she said, "What's to keep them from pulling out again, they did it once, maybe they'll do it again." I told her, figure what's best for her and do what she thought appropriate, but we can save twenty-five dollars a month, and that makes sense.
If you ask Key Bank about it, tell them that, you think they'll do it?
She's been talking, I don't know if they're researching it, or trying to come up with a solution, but if they can't, I guess it's probably wise to go to Home Savings, same service base, it's closer, and it's twenty-five dollars a month. You have no problem with that?
No.
Depository agreement?
Right, I was just gonna say, those aren't up until fifteen.
We would have to amend it.
So we'd have to amend that ordinance.
Right, if we're gonna do that, we have to.
We need Home Savings a month.
They're up again this year? Not fifteen, fifteen, and we're gonna have to do it.
Well, I just basically, you know, threw it out to her, you decided to, she's one that deals it all the time, if everyone can be there, and if there's a cost benefit, that's fine, too. Throw it out there.
Just don't switch anything to all this other stuff.
I'd like to throw out here, as I kept talking about it earlier, you know, we have a gas station at town here, that's kind of struggling, it's been up and down, and Ed Rossbeck, and I just know Ed casually, so there's nothing in this for me, but obviously. But I would really like to see, see us utilize that gas station as much as we can, and we should support that. I hate to see that building go away, or something happen to that, and I just, I just feel we should support it, and the police committee and streets committee, I think we should be looking at encouraging us to start doing business with that, with that station. We spoke back in our meetings, and we have to set up some sort of account, and we'll rest, you'll take care of that.
Yeah, we can get going.
One of the shortcomings is, is there's no diesel there. And eleven hours is also an issue. But he promised to give as much as he could, as long as he could.
Like, for this last month with Shell, roughly thirty-three hundred bucks.
Yeah.
So.
Certainly wouldn't hurt.
I mean, if he gets.
He'd get two-thirds of that.
Yeah.
Because if you start, if you continue, those come across with my Russell's conversation.
Okay.
Because you're, you're at C more than anything.
Yeah. But I'm just stopping up there and see how we have to set up our account.
I understand, I was saying, it's signage, yes.
Okay. If I stop by and get him something, then both of us will go off, so that.
Just so everybody knows, public disclosure here, it's, their pricing on their gas room is, and I checked it multiple times in the last week, is identical to the station that is being used in Stroud.
Along with those same lines, that I have given them some leeway when it comes to signage at this point, so, for similar reasons, what's your say?
I hope everybody remembers that several years ago, we gave him property, because his, his part of the station was on our property. We never got a thank you, we never got nothing. He got a good price from the Indian folks that he sold it to. Now, Ed's coming around looking for help. He's a nice guy, I know him, I know him for a long time. But, you know, we gotta be careful that we're not pushing business this way or that way. Why are you trying, why do you try and help?
What's wrong with us utilizing a business that's in our community?
Nothing.
As long as the pricing, there's no difference in pricing?
Nothing.
So that's basically all we'd be doing, Joe, as long as we're not paying more for it.
Now, you remember what we did on that?
Yes.
That's what he sold it, remember, he sold, has it sold it to, sell it to students? Go ahead.
I'm not, just saying, if the pricing was different, that'd be entirely different for everyone. We'd even be proposing this.
But you can't control price, it could work tomorrow.
But as long as it's competitive to the, the station we're using now.
Right, because we're not gonna shut down our accounts at the other end, because we have too many shifts we have to deal with, and we have to be able to access gasoline at all times.
Ed, believe me, Joe, I'm not thinking about Ed Rossbeck, I'm thinking about a business, that building, it's eating a fire line, so it doesn't get down, and then you have, you know, a sign sort of down.
Okay, I'm sure, I'll let you see that too.
That's my concern, yeah.
So Nick, if we are not using in-station cards with him, that's the only purpose of that ordinance, if we just have an account there like we did years and years ago.
Right.
Where it was just an understanding, our guy, you go in, get the gas, he gives us an accounting of how much is being bought.
Right.
Price that's owed, we have to have something to pay by the month.
Well, there would be, yeah, but there would be a little more responsibility here on the guys, too, because then when they leave, they should fill something out, if they're not getting something from him, that they bought gas on this date at this time and this amount.
So you work that out, yeah.
When I get the bills, that I have something then to look at. Yeah, I mean, if you did, you see.
Yeah.
I'm sure it will.
He should be able to proceed.
The machine's automatically give a juice, don't it?
Yes.
Yes, I just wanted to do that.
So we don't really even need to name that ordinance, because those are not in-station cards, and that's what the issue was, they wanted to see those vendors.
All right, one last thing I forgot, there is a, out where the township park is right now, soccer fields and everything, they're, they're proposing to build a, it's called Community Center for lack of a better word, it'll be an indoor facility that they can use for baseball, or soccer, or meetings, or whatever. And they've been meeting fairly regularly, they're gonna have a meeting this Thursday at seven o'clock at the Holy Family Parish Center, if anyone's interested in going. Right now, it's just in developmental stages, but I know that Mike Hayor's donated a lot of services, utilities, and things like that, or they're gonna probably go around with the community and try and raise funds to build this building. Indoor facility? Yes, yeah. What, at, at the, just in park? Exactly. Could be.
It's like what we had out there, they had farms, farms, but they, they did soccer and some kind of stuff.
So who does it actually belong to?
Um, it's gonna be, for Poland, basically.
It's a, a government built one?
No, it's gonna be like a recreational building, basically, indoor, where they probably have a synthetic turf or something, play soccer.
Township, township.
Township, yeah, it'll be Township Park.
As part of there.
The building itself's gonna be seven hundred thousand dollars, I'm guessing. I don't know, maybe. You could ask them. So that's, they always invite me, and I can never go on Thursdays, but it's seven o'clock at Holy Family, if anyone's interested. This, this Thursday? This Thursday, correct.
So is it Republic Services that's providing all?
They're gonna do a lot of materials for it, you know, the throttle lines, the sewer lines, and water lines, and things like that.
Republic has done almost that whole part. That was part of your range, but that's how it ended up where it is, because it butts up against the program.
Did, did he ever get in touch with you, Mike Hayor?
No, since I was at that meeting with him.
Okay, because when I went to the meeting out there, he came up to me afterwards, and he said, "We're gonna have five thousand dollars for you guys."
Yeah, starting next year.
For the fours.
Yeah, I mean, that's pretty much, I got it. All right, at seven thirty, please stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America, interior governor, for which it stands, on the nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call members.
This side.
Here.
Donovan.
Here.
Tony Lember.
Here.
This is Serna.
Here.
This is Yash.
Here.
Acceptance of the minutes from the previous council meeting.
Make a motion, we waive the reading, and pass the break.
Montever? You opposed?
Is this for the October seven?
Notification of meetings and events to the public and news media, bloopers. Findings.
Working on a meeting with National Healthcare for the hospitalization issue, she's supposed to get back to me this week, so if you guys have kind of an idea for your next couple of week schedules, if you could get back to me, open for the next couple of weeks, any night?
I'm pretty much out.
Okay, like six-thirty-ish? Six to the top. Some of us have to cook dinner.
Nick can cook, I'll barb.
Okay, we'll shoot for six-thirty.
Twenty-two, should take you out.
It's not as hot.
All right, legislation? Police?
Uh, nothing.
Streets?
We met tonight, same time next week, next month.
Boards, ARB?
Architecture Review Board meets the first Thursday of every month, seven PM, Village Hall.
Planning?
Nothing.
Board of Attorney Appeals?
Nothing.
Restaurant Service Fire District?
Meeting would be November twelfth, Wednesday, seven-thirty, up at the station on One Seventy.
Forest Board?
The fourth Tuesday.
That'd be the twenty-eighth, at seven-thirty.
And Hyde Memorial?
Well, we were supposed to meet, a special meeting in October, but I guess we're gonna meet in, in November, is that right? That didn't happen? No, everybody called up. We meet the third Wednesday, so I'd say the third Wednesday in November. The lights are up on the trees. The lights are up on the trees.
Third Wednesday would be the nineteenth. Three o'clock?
Three o'clock, that's what we want, isn't it?
I'm gonna have to, uh...
Yeah, you can, you can see it, they're gonna have to ask you guys to... Yeah.
Okay, let's call it three o'clock. Just take them all out, you can have the meeting on the way back.
Port for Mayor, you leave that in caucus, I'm looking at that.
Motion to accept the management report?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Port firm fiscal officer?
Okay, I'm circulating around the list of bills to be paid. And the September reconciliation is completed, it's all reconciled, circulating after your signatures. You have plenty of September numbers. Basically, they are not in bad shape at all, there's only a few line items that I'm gonna have to look at for next month, everything seems to be around the seventy-five percent number. We received a workers' comp rebate check in the amount of four thousand, four, five hundred seventy-three dollars and eighty-one cents. Last year, we got six thousand nineteen dollars and eleven cents. So it's a little down, but it's something that they're giving back, so... And then, we have an annual appropriation ordinance amendment of the two thousand dollars which was discussed in caucus. In my packet, I've enclosed the information on the workers' comp rebate, the ordinance, and also section seven, one-three-oh-three regarding the dedication of rates.
Henry, what?
Motion to accept, yes, report.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
All right, report.
What percentage should we be at?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five percent?
You can debuff your...
On that, the rebate of workers' comp, if you notice the, the thing that Nick included in his report, they're asking us to use, if possible, some of that money for safety issues. And Russ has expressed that he is in need of a chainsaw, and that that could be a potential safety issue if we don't have the time and equipment that we need. So Streets might want to take a look at that.
But that money is in the general fund, so we just have to transfer over.
We could actually be paid out of the general fund, doesn't matter.
I like to...
He wants that for cash, he could put his hands on it.
Okay.
All right, report from the zoning administrator.
Not at this time.
Thank goodness Anthony's not here today. We have to fill in for Anthony.
Marchant, who excuses the solicitor?
Oh yeah, we never did that. All in favor? Any opposed? He did submit his report in ready, I think everyone got a copy of that for Anthony?
Yes. Do you have anything else on the, on the stock property besides what he asked to do is moving it up? How does he start it?
I can comment on all that. Did you read the solicitor's report? Okay, so, the, the judge said that it needs to be torn down, and asked if we would work with Mr. Eislerstein and his attorney on finding a place where it will fit, where it will meet all regulations. I said that I, and Anthony both said that we would be happy to do that. So that's where we are with that. It's Anthony's contention, and I agree with him that we do nothing until it's torn down.
So, is that, when does that happen?
This says October twenty-first on it, the judge actually called me on Friday. I mean, I can call, if you'd like for me, I can comment on this. And I filled in the solicitor and the, and the mayor, the day that this happened. I received a phone call from Judge Lanzo, the prosecutor, Mr. Eislerstein and his attorney. And that was on Friday, we were scheduled for a jury trial on Monday. It, it was not a scheduled meeting, okay? It was not a scheduled pre-trial, let's put it that way. The judge said that, that he wanted us to get this figured out, and Mr. Eislerstein pleaded guilty, and so that's where we are with that. So I, I actually didn't have to show up for the jury trial that I was subpoenaed to go to for this past Monday, it actually would have been yesterday, right? So I did not have to go to, it didn't occur. Sentencing will be December nineteenth.
So at that point, probably a good time for anyone to take a down, I'm sure.
Okay.
By the way, that petition that we were talking, just before our last council meeting, that meeting occurred to me, basically what that petition was, was a request for a variance, us to forgive them having that in the ovarian zone. Counsel doesn't have the power to grant a variance. So that petition, we couldn't act on it if you wanted to.
Well, the Board of, Board of Zoning Appeals.
Board of Zoning Appeals is the problem.
And I got a feeling that the council could override that and do it.
Yeah, but the place to start is the Board of Zoning Appeals for a variance. To bring petition to, to counsel, to waive that law, is granting a variance, we cannot do that.
I suspect...
It has to start with the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I suspect we could do it if we wanted to.
Has to start with Board of Zoning Appeals.
Not necessarily. Yes. We could override it, I think.
Could override, it has to start with the Board of Zoning Appeals.
It needs to go to the Board of Appeals. Of course.
Counsel cannot grant a variance.
It's not, it's moved right now.
It's moved now, but I'm just saying, that petition really meant nothing to us.
Okay, Dave, when do you have the next, this meeting? Figure out where to put this?
There is not a, a date set for that, at this point. There is not a date set for that, at this point. I will be working with Anthony to figure that out.
Okay, how far?
Strangely, I have not received anything on the Barnhiser property for a court date. It hasn't come. I haven't received anything.
He's still working on it?
Yeah, he is working on it, so that's a good thing. But I would have guessed that I would have received a, a pre-trial date for his, but I haven't. And that's down at Struthers Court.
Motion.
Solicitor.
How about, across, across the street from...
Strangely, I have not received anything on that one.
I did call some, I, I'd like to mention some of these guys, you know who I'm talking to.
Sure.
They're fed up with this.
Understood.
They say, "Joe, the neighborhood's going to help."
And I agree.
Yeah.
I agree, and the, the charges have been filed into Struthers Court. I have not received a date, and let's not forget that every day that they're in violation is a separate offense. It's the way it's written. We'll see what hap, I mean, I, I can't do anything, there's nothing more I can do. They've already been charged.
Okay, then, there's a guy, eighty total, man, he's parking on the parkway, you know? We gotta cut that out too.
That's a new one for me.
There's no...
That's a new one, I haven't heard that one.
Yep.
Motion to complain about that?
Thank you for telling me.
Motion to accept the solicitor's...
Wait a minute, you're kind of pushing me here.
Is that maybe a zoning issue?
Yeah, that's more of a zoning issue.
Yeah, the parking, the parking violation.
No, I, I don't know if, Bob, you know what I was talking about?
Yeah, I know. He could park in the church.
Yeah.
Right across the street.
Exactly, or in his backyard.
That's right. Well, they got four cars in that. They got four cars.
It's not our problem.
Yeah, but they should just park in the church.
Yeah, right. Correct.
Hey, we're, we're gonna exit, this is solicitor's report, we'll revisit. No, I'm okay, no, I'm okay. Dave, you have to...
This is solicitor's report.
Yes, solicitor's report.
All in favor? Any opposed? Let's, let's, Dave's report.
Motion to accept Dave's report.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, report from Chief of Police and Street Commissioner.
Both departments, men and women.
I'd just like to thank the chief for taking some action here on a backup plan for salt. We have no idea what we're in for, and at least it gives us a little bit more to rely on should we need it. If you read the article in the paper, just about everybody is, is trying to just preserve some of the salt. And of course, who knows, whether, whether time comes it'll be available or not. But at least it's trying to take ahead. Thank you.
What did Bob Simon, what kind of equipment did he give to the chief?
Push mowers, pressure washer, leaf blower, and a zero turn.
Chainsaw?
No.
Dismissed?
What do you want your salt coming at? You said you got something from them.
I just got a, I guess it's saying that they will sell us salt, committed twenty-five tons at a cost of one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-nine cents a ton.
And they'll only sell us twenty-five tons?
Yes.
You did a good thing.
Well, come here. Minimum order is twenty.
Motion to accept...
That's the maximum, they'll sell us just twenty-five tons.
Twenty-five. Minimum is twenty.
That's one truckload.
Yeah.
Are, are we gonna put it?
Bring back the hundred tons with the zero.
But the funny thing is that Ohio, ODOT purchased from an Indiana company. Now, why does Indiana have so much salt that they can bring it to Ohio, but we have none?
Is that from the state? Or is that from Morton?
Morton.
Okay.
That one's from Morton, yeah.
Okay, so that's separate from what we did.
Indiana is a, is a private company that has it.
Yeah. That's interesting. They, I, I spent over an hour on the phone with them, they wouldn't tell me if they would even sell us any, and they wouldn't quote me a price. So, that's what they'll sell us, and that's the price.
So everybody stopped using salt on their birds.
They keep it.
Motion to accept the two reports?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Report from Engineer? Reports from Assistant Committees of Council, finance, wage, audit and insurance.
Hopefully, everybody got a, a sheet about the levy at their homes, and we're just asking everyone to please vote for our renewal, no increase in taxes. It's gonna raise about a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, and on a one-hundred-thousand-dollar home, that's ninety-four point oh-eight per year. And it covers just about all of our operations, keeping phone doors going.
So, how, how's the sidewalk coming?
I haven't heard another thing since that meeting.
I talked to Eric and Gary yesterday about something different, and I asked them that question, he said they basically submitted it to the state and are waiting to hear back from them.
Okay.
Whatever that means.
See you this spring.
Good thing, I said, hurry up, we've got another month left, maybe.
Motion to accept. Finance report?
All in favor? Any opposed? Legislation and policy?
No, nothing, any thoughts?
Police and fire?
Uh, nothing, somebody...
Streets, sidewalks and drainage?
Nothing.
And bloopers?
Yeah, we're gonna discuss the celebrate hall issue.
Reports from boards, planning?
Let me, let me go back, you might as well know that. I talked to the guys in the county, and they're gonna start the, sort of, in November, first part of November. Joe DeSantis, I guess Ross is calling, yeah, Joe DeSantis is a guy running, running the county sanitary, too. I guess he's like the chief of the year, you know? Anyhow, I keep him in the program.
Is this the pipe through the woods, Joe?
Yep.
Okay, that's the forge.
Yep.
Okay, motion approved, engineer's report.
Engineer's report. Take my job.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, report from boards, planning commission?
We did not need black to the floor.
Board of Zoning Appeals?
Nothing, sir.
ARB?
Nothing.
Forest Board? High Memorial? And West Reserve Fire District?
Joe, anything for me?
Can I report?
I give everybody a copy of the minutes.
Reports from Superior Committees? Communications from residents? Any new business? Any old business? Motion, warnings, resolutions?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the three readings, a pass by emergency, and ordinance to amend appropriations.
Second.
We'll call?
Mr. Cassett?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Attorney Lembert?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Serna?
Yes.
Mrs. Yash?
Yes.
Motion to pass an ordinance, amending ordinance number fourteen fifty-one dash fourteen, permanent appropriations, and to declare an emergency.
Second.
We'll call?
Mr. Cassett?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Attorney Lembert?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Serna?
Yes.
Mr. Yash?
Yes.
Any other motions, ordinances, resolutions? I thought Joe was gonna cover, but isn't there a pancake breakfast this weekend for the fire department or something? It's October twentieth, next weekend.
There is.
It's October twenty-sixth, twenty...
It's coming, it's coming Sunday?
Yeah, I think it's Sunday, right? Sunday the twenty-sixth.
Sunday the twenty-sixth, pancake breakfast for the fire department, correct?
Yeah, six o'clock. Right here, right here.
At the station, main station.
I saw that sign in my mail, so, okay. All right, the second and third readings? Presentation of the bills.
Make a motion that the bills be paid.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nice to have you back.
They didn't pay last time.
No, we didn't.
No, really.
Questions from the news media? Remarks by council. I'd like to start saying thank you again to Mike Simon for the stuff he gave us, that zero-turn radius tractors, fifteen, twenty thousand dollar piece of equipment he gave us, pretty nice. Thank you very much for that. Mr. Cassett?
Still half over.
Sorry. Back up. Mr. Donovan?
Same thing, thanks, Mike, and also thanks, Mike, for the lighting the village green again.
Uh, yep, there you go.
And also, everybody, don't forget to vote for the levy.
We have council Wednesday.
Wednesday, or the afternoon. Fifth. Mr. Major?
I, I thank Simon also. And Rensky too, he was, he's part of the, part of the deal, just the lights.
The destination nations tours, this all stuff?
The lights and, it's not the, yeah, not the equipment.
By the way, Larry, you asked him about being on a committee, you know?
For the zoning issues, is that who?
Yeah, for the zoning, yeah.
Yeah, Ed?
Well, I talked to, talked to his secretary, and, uh, he's too busy right now to get involved, that's what he got back to me with, so, I don't know what we're gonna do.
Well, I mean, it's, it's really a legislation issue, because we're looking at amending ordinances that have been in existence for a very long time, and that we probably need a lot of revisions, too. So, you know, it probably needs to be a joint effort, I would think, and it's gonna be a long task. But it can't just be one person that's going to do it, you know, and there's no way that we can do that. Now, if legislation is willing to initiate it, I don't think that the first step is gonna be that difficult to collect ordinances from other entities our own size or close to it. Why that stuff is available online, on different entities' websites, you can get their zoning ordinances. But, you know, you're talking about comparing all those things, you know, and deciding how you're going to revise them, and then I'm sure there's gonna be a little arguing about how it will be revised, and, but, you know, it's a big project.
The planning commission is gonna be taking on zoning laws for signs and defenses as soon as we get past this historic legislation.
That's good, maybe, yeah, maybe we could just kind of roll into it from there.
Right.
I mean, I'd be willing to help, and I had offered that to Ed and some of the ladies who had offered some help with it, too, but it is going to be a very big project. And, and I do think that legislation really should be involved in this.
The zoning code, really, the planning commission is the, is the place where that needs to really be initiated.
To amend any zoning issues?
Zoning laws, correct.
Okay, and that really excludes me, I'm gonna take a step back from it then, because I'm not on any of those things except ARB, and that's more design than it is.
I mean, we're trying to, we're trying to identify the gaps, and it's gonna take, it's gonna take years.
And probably just.
Change the zoning law, we, we all know it takes, change the zoning law, you know, I guess, we go through planning commission, we're looking at months there, then it comes to council, and we have public hearings, and council has to pass, and, you know, it takes a long time.
And it was a, it was a tour, even amending the police fees, I mean, increasing those fees, and I'm sure that the fees need to be changed, too, and the fines for zoning, because that's gonna help us to enforce if we have those fines updated, and we make it a little tougher for people to disobey the law.
Well, just a comment, now, either you're gonna patchwork, or you might just do the whole thing. I mean, you would definitely make that decision on zoning, whether you wanna just kinda go out, get somebody, or.
We've, we talked, we talked about that, I don't know if you knew this, a decade ago.
Yeah.
And we were looking at ten, twelve thousand dollars to have, I think it was American Legal Publishing, come in and do it, so we'd have to appropriate some, a pretty good chunk of change for someone outside to do it.
Well, it's legislation, I mean, I'm going to get in there and coordinate the whole thing, you can zone him, and I can do the rest here.
Mr. Moonlight, remarks?
Uh, I just want to thank David Rispante, I think, for doing an excellent job, above and beyond what he thought he was getting into, on Mr. Simon, thank you.
Echo, thank you to Mr. Simon, Mr. Simon, for the equipment donation, and also for the fellow that tapes our council meets, I finally watched one, and they're, they're really good.
Nice.
Yeah, thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven fifty-five, major? Seven, without an incident?
Subject to what, please? Subject to?
The county engineer and county prosecutor.
Subject to the county engineer and county prosecutor. Noting these two changes.
Then whatever, whatever else is in the court, for those two to prove.
These two changes, you mean? Older group is here, the guy engineering.